We'll go ahead and call tonight's planning commission to order. We'll start by approving our agenda and minutes. Minutes from last meeting and agenda for tonight.
I'd move to approve the minutes and agenda from both meetings.
Second. Motion, a second. All in favor? We'll start into new business. Request for conditional use permit for North Shore Waste Demolition Site, Case 2025-2CUP. I would like to, with the board, I have a potential conflict of interest with this. If you guys are comfortable, I will continue to chair, but just will abstain from voting on anything. Is that...
Mm-hmm.
All right. Niva.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request for a conditional use permit, for a permit by rural transfer station for municipal solid waste, recyclable materials, and demolition waste. The property is 5.52 acres, and the property is owned by Cook County. The applicant is Dustin Hanson with North Shore Waste, but today Brooke is with us from Cook County Facilities Management. The parcel is entirely within the single-family residential R1 Zone District, and in the, this is listed conditional use for any zone district in Cook County, and the property is within the North Shore Management Zone of Lake Superior. This request is brought forth by North Shore Waste to build and operate a permit by rural transfer station on county-owned land that currently hosts the Hovland Highway Department Garage. The Hovland Transfer Station will be a part of a hub-and-spoke model for North Shore Waste, which proposes to provide solid waste services in Cook County. The site will accept municipal solid waste, recyclable materials, and demolition materials, which will then be transferred to the Grand Wright Transfer Facility to be processed for transport outside of Cook County. The operation will include a one-direction driving route with specific roll-off containers for drop-off. The site will also have an office for staff and guests. The layout of the site will include a gravel parking lot with just less than one acre in size, with an eight-foot-high chain link fence and gated entrance with access off the North Road. The site is set back away from the road, which will limit visibility. For zoning considerations, the zoning map of the Hovland area is on the screen. The green area is the single-family residential zone district, and the subject property is highlighted in the yellow box. The red is the general commercial zone district, and the orange is the FAR 2 or 3 Zone District. I can't quite read it from here. Regardless, the principal purpose of the single-family residential zone district is to provide for residential uses at a higher density, generally adjacent to or near developed areas, major roadways, and other sources of services. And then in the zone district, zoning ordinance does recognize that limited commercial uses are allowed on a conditional use basis in the zone district, and that's how we're reviewing this in this location today. Next up, we've got for background on the site. This property, as we mentioned, with the highway garage there, there's also been a recycling trailer drop-off site historically. Access across the road, the land is owned for general commercial uses between the North Road and Highway 61, although several of those parcels are residential uses. A permit by rural transfer station is regulated by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. In addition to the Cook County conditional use permit, stormwater permits, and land use permits for structures, the operator will also need to work with the MPCA to ensure full compliance for this type of solid waste facility. On the screen is from the application, which shows that this will be kind of a one-directional loop where users will stop at the building to pay for their stuff, drive through, drop off the demolition waste, and there will be certain drop-off points along the way. For site conditions and consideration, for septic, the transfer station will not create sewage, however, there will be a staffed building during operating hours, so the application doesn't indicate what services will be provided for staff on that account. Maybe there's some outhouses, I'm not sure if the highway garage has septic, so that's something to discuss a little bit further. For impervious surface coverage, because this property is in the North Shore Management Zone, it is in shoreline area of Lake Superior. By my calculations, this expansion will exceed the 30% impervious surface coverage maximum, which will then trigger the need to have a surface water runoff plan by a registered engineer. So on there is just an estimate of my current calculations that the highway department's usage generates an impervious surface coverage, I think it's about 21% of the property, and then adding just short of an acre of additional impervious surface coverage will exceed that allowable amount, so a water runoff plan will be needed. Given the presence of wetlands on the property, which is shown on this slide, surface water runoff plan is essentially just being intentional about the grading to ensure that water's getting into the wetlands for proper filtration, and there isn't any immediate surface waters near here, so it's not of a high concern. For, while I already talked about wetlands, that's the wetland delineation map. It's nice to have that available at this stage of the project, where you can see that there will be some wetland impacts. They have been working with Mitch Travis, the Cook County Wetland Specialist, to talk through the replacement plan for those wetland impacts. For slope, the parcel doesn't have any steep slopes or bluffs. For noise, the activity is anticipated to generate some noise while dumpsters are emptied or roll-offs are switched out. For lighting, the application indicates that the hours of operation are expected to be two days a week in the summer and one day a week in the winter, although no hours are specifically stipulated. Hours of operation may extend into the evening to offer availability to the public outside of normal working hours, in which case outdoor lighting may be installed in the future. For safe access, the existing access off the North Road is proposed, which is currently used to access the county's recycling trailer, and just a note that there is odor anticipated from this use. For public noticing, this application was legally noticed in the Cook County News Herald on March 28th. Thirteen letters of notification were sent to adjacent property owners, as well as county departments, North Shore Management Board, MPCA, and the DNR hydrologist. We did not receive any written comments during that written comment period. And first off, consideration based off of the findings that we have, we found that the proposed transfer station is aligned to provide better solid waste management services to Cook County in the 2023 Northeast Regional Minnesota Solid Waste Management Plan, and that the use is adjacent to land zone general commercial and is readily accessible from the North Road near Highway 61. The use is aligned to provide solid waste services to the Hovland area and is next to the highway department garage and abutting general commercial zone land, and that the proposed use will provide a service to the community and is a part of the larger hub-and-spoke model that North Shore Waste Plans utilize more efficient solid waste services throughout Cook County. And then for staff recommendations for consideration, historically, this site has had issues of cleanliness with unattended recycling drop-off trailers. With the transfer station being surrounded by a fence with a gated entrance and a staffed facility, these issues are less likely to occur. The proposed use appears non-problematic with surrounding land use patterns and zoning. The planning commission should consider the potential findings listed in this report and modify or amend or adopt them as they determine appropriate after the public hearing for recommendation for the county board of commissioners. And then I did list off some potential conditions of approval for your consideration. Number one, all local, state, and federal regulations must be adhered to, and this is where we talk about the surface water runoff plan being required. Property shall be in compliance with the state's septic regulations and wetland regulations, and that all permits for necessary construction will be received prior to construction. Number two, any outdoor lighting shall be downcast and directed only to the transfer station area. Number three, the security fencing and gate shall be installed in accordance with the conditional use permit application. And number four, the facility shall be staffed and open for business.
Thank you, Niva. At this point, I'd open it to the owner, if he wants to add anything to Niva's narrative. Dustin.
I think Niva did a fantastic job explaining it. I really don't have a lot of comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you guys have some.
Was the county... Thank you. At this point, we'll open it to the public for comment. Is anyone here to speak on this application?
Can I just ask a question, Charlie? Do I have to come up to the microphone?
We do have to come up and state your name and address before the record.
It is not a comment, it is a question for the fire department. We currently have the tank building behind the county highway building. The only map I saw that might have had the placement was the wetlands.
We can bring that back up.
Thank you, and so is the placement proposed to the west of the buildings, not encompassing the area that would...
Yeah, so that's where the trailer is, so...
Okay.
And then your tank building back there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Now, the entrance coming into that area, this entrance off of North Road is not going to be barred to truck traffic?
No, it'll be open, and then the gates will be up here.
Okay.
Coming into just the fenced-in area there.
That was my question. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment? At this point, we'll close to the public and discuss amongst the board. Jeff, you want to start?
Sure. Just one question. I know there's a lot of tree removal. Is there going to be any screening left on the west side? I mean, there is, there are trees off the property, but is any screening going to be left on the county parcel on the west side? I just keep, always think about the Tofty site and hoping that this doesn't kind of look like that from the west.
From the looks of it, there's not going to be a whole lot of trees left, but the fencing is going to be taller than the Tofty site and then have the plastic slats in it to kind of block the view of the garbage, not of the fence.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, I understand the fence, but then we lose the natural buffer on that edge. Just kind of a concern for me.
I think they're going to leave what's there. It's just pretty sparsely treed right now, you know, so there's not a whole lot. I mean, we could probably look at doing some plantings of some pines or something along that tree line to block it, but I don't think there's much to leave currently at that site.
Yeah, yeah, if you look at the air photos, there is a mix of mostly broad leaves and some evergreens, but yeah.
Is it appropriate for me to comment on that? My conflict of interest is, I'm potentially the excavation contractor on this site. In looking at that layout, there is, right along that line, existing evergreen vegetation there that is mostly on the neighbor's parcel, but there is some here that will all remain. So directly to the neighbor's house, there is reasonably good cover there. This parcel is fairly sparse on what's there.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Oh, Dustin's saying something.
Dustin.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Dustin.
I was just going to say that I agree with Charlie's comments. You know, our intention would be to not clear anything west of the fence line. I'm guessing with some dirt work being done there, you know, there might be, there might be an area where, you know, where they're going to have to be on that west side to get the fence posted and stuff like that, but we wouldn't, our intention is not clear anything west of that fence line.
Ms. Wilson?
Courtney?
I do not have anything else.
I've got two questions. Is there an intention on the septic answer? Is there going to be...
I'm not sure what, Dustin, but yeah, the septic, the county building has a well holding tank that we have to pump regularly, but I do not believe they will have access to that building, because you'd have to have access to then all the equipment that's in there as well. So I'm assuming we have to have G and G get a satellite out there.
Sure.
Yes, that is correct. We would put a porta-potty out there.
Okay. And then my second question is about the existing trailer, the recycling trailer. Is that going to be within the fence? Is that leaving? Is that the, you know...
That'd be useful for Dustin. Yeah, I think it's leaving, but that's...
Dustin?
Yeah, the intention, the intention is to move recycling inside the fenced-in area, and so it would limit the availability to recycling at some points, but I think it also kind of addresses the issue of how even is being left at that recycling trailer that shouldn't be there.
Yeah, I mean, I made it on the map even of nearby proximal neighbors, so it's definitely my neighborhood, and I know that things get left at that trailer that shouldn't. It does feel a little bit cross-purpose if the intention is to increase our access to services, to then only be able to access it one or two days a week. So I'm a little caught between those two things, to be honest.
Sure. Well, I think that's a conversation that can happen between, you know, the folks in Hovland, the Land Services Department, and us. I guess I'm not prepared to answer that completely right now.
Mm-hmm.
Tim?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would state just anecdotally, we had had a period of time where the abuse of the trailer with the other items going into those recycling bins created such a problem that we had to remove those from the site. So having them fenced in and used and available for periods of time is a better solution than removing them altogether from the site and not even having that service accessible at all.
Thank you, Tim. Anything else, Paul?
That's it for now.
You got anything? Not hearing any other discussion in the board, I guess I would entertain a vote, or a motion, I mean.
I would make a motion to approve with the conditions that were outlined by staff.
A second. We've got a motion and a second with the proposed conditions by staff. Do we feel comfortable with staff's findings? Yes. We're concurring with staff's findings. With that, a call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes.
All right. Thanks, Dustin. I'll bring this to the next action meeting for the commissioners.
Thank you, everybody.
How can I?
Our next agenda item is a work session for draft proposal revisions for subdivision ordinance. Niva.
Exciting stuff. All right. I don't know to what degree we want to get into details on this, but this is my unveiling of some brainstorming I've been doing over the winter, and so we don't have a lot of quote-unquote "affordable" housing in Cook County, and so the question is, what can we do at the county level in our planning and zoning facility to try to do what we can do, do our part, so to say? So our current conditions, you know, just to make sure we're all on the same page, we have limited private land, 9% of Cook County is held in private ownership, the rest of it is state or federal. We have high cost of development. Our private septic systems are starting around $30,000. We're hearing quotes in our office for $40,000, $50,000 septic systems. Zoning pattern with large minimum lot size requirements inland, so our FAR 1, 2, and 3 zone districts that are the primarily non-shoreland inland zone districts, those are 20, 10, and 5-acre minimum lot sizes. So of that private land, it's pretty large tracts of land. The lake is where you get the high density, so Lakeshore Residential, 1-acre lots. And then you get one primary dwelling and one guest cabin per residential parcel, and frankly, this is where we're actually more generous than what's usually allowed in a lot of other areas that guest cabin, that second dwelling on your lot would have to, if you're on shoreline, be, you know, set back further, or you'd need twice the lot size to have it. So this is actually one area of our zoning that we're more lenient than what other counties traditionally are, just for a frame of reference. So the question, how can rural zoning be a part of the solution to housing issues? So the purpose of everything that I am trying to do in what I'm going to talk about here is to encourage workforce housing, so focusing on places people will live. I'm not focusing on second homes or really the higher-end type thing. I'm trying to get what could be actual housing. Preserve our large tracts of land as open spaces, so not change the character of Cook County. How do we maintain that FAR 1, 2, and 3 zone district, but still allow more single-family ownership? And limit short-term rentals to prioritize permanent housing availability. I want to streamline some permitting processes to reduce costs and delays for developers, and align our subdivision and zoning regulations to reduce administrative burdens where we can. So with all of this, I am thinking of doing something, well, I'm going to, that doesn't look good anyway. Not to self, change the color scheme on that slide. So open space subdivisions is where I landed on this. So for those of you unfamiliar, an open space subdivision is a type of plat where your conventional subdivision would have everybody, you know, you're in the FAR 3 with 5-acre minimum lot sizes, everybody has to have a 5-acre lot, but you're all in one big row, and it is just very standardized. The open space subdivision, you're looking at the landscape, and you're saying, what is tricky about this landscape to develop? You've got wetlands, you've got a river, you've got some steep slopes. Okay, well, let's take all that area that's already not easy to develop, let's set that aside into the 50% open space, and then let's make smaller lots in the area of this land that is easier to develop. Cook County's already hard landscape to develop, so this seems like a good fit, but we don't see a lot of these types of proposals in our office. Not a lot of people take advantage of the open space subdivision. We see a lot more of the administrative subdivisions, and, you know, it's an easier permitting process, but you're not being as efficient as you could with the landscape with an administrative subdivision, because it essentially turns out looking like that conventional subdivision method over time. So I'm trying to find a way to facilitate or incentivize developers to consider this open space subdivision as a tool to better do things. Mink Ranch Road is a really nice example over in Lutzen. It's, I think, a nice success story of Woodland Foothills preliminary and final plats that we just did the final approvals of, the build-out, or not really build-out, the final lots of it. So this zoning, this parcel map you see on here is still before those final five lots got added on the east side, but if you follow Mink Ranch Road up on that map there, you end at Woodland Foothills, a little cul-de-sac, and there's a nice little community there where there's a lot of people living and working in the community. So those are really small lots, and that's kind of the lot size that I was playing around with when I was trying to formulate what this new version of an open space subdivision could allow. So I am not married to anything in this, except for a couple of sticking points. So this name, not something I'm married to, is what we got, Residential Open Space Overlay District, ROZO. This is my idea, this is nothing official. I should say draft on every one of these slides. I'm, again, not offended if we want to toss the whole thing out, but I want to get some feedback from you. So again, this is an open space subdivision idea I have. Now, the first step of what this idea is, is that we would make this as an overlay district. So in zoning, we've got our different zone districts, and this would be a specific overlay district that lays over the normal zoning. So we're not changing the zoning at all, but it's an extra zoning layer over it. The reason that's important is because there's specific uses I want to target in on, and if it's not in this overlay district, it's going to be really hard for our office to know over time that these properties are a part of this special provision. So the good side, the reason people would want to be a part of this, is because I'm proposing a higher-density allowance, so you would get one and a half more private lots out of this open space subdivision than a standard subdivision. So remember earlier where I said, every property, you get one main dwelling and one guest cabin? Essentially, I'm saying, let's let that guest cabin be in separate ownership to someone else. So let's, we're not making more dwellings per an area that what someone could have, it's just that everybody gets one dwelling, kind of, is the nuts and bolts of it. I created kind of some bumpers around this idea to try to keep it out of problematic areas, so non-shoreland area, staying away from lakes. I don't want to get into the DNR's feelers, don't even want to mess with it. So if we stay in non-shoreland, everything stays a lot easier. The caveat to that is rivers I'm proposing could be in the open space. See if the DNR's okay with that. They'll need to give their blessing on that eventually, anyway. I'm saying this is for the FAR 2 and the FAR 3 zone districts, so 5-acre and 10-acre minimum lot size areas. So the FAR 1, keep in mind, 20-acre minimum lot size, dog kennels are permitted use. Let's not try to go into there. Also, FAR 1 is usually further away from roads. FAR 2 and FAR 3 are usually right off of a main road, so there are main travel corridors. We're trying to keep this close to where people can actually get out of their driveway. Within close distances to county roads, I have a provision in here that states that it has to be direct access off of a county township or state road, and so we're not going to be having this, you know, way in the bush off of Tom Lake Road, like the non-roads that the Forest Service and the DNR has. We're going to avoid those areas at this point. And then the thing that I really want to try to push for this is that, within this overlay district, this would not allow vacation rentals. So this is really targeted for housing. I want to really focus on very specific uses. That'd be very restrictive. So if people go into something like this, I don't want to hear down the road, oh, I need to make some income, so I need to rent out this thing to someone on Airbnb. That's not the intent of this at all. You can rent it out long-term rental if you want to do that, and that's highly needed as well. So those type of things. So this density allowance I talked about, this is a table that tries to explain it in numbers. So you would have the FAR 2 is a 10-acre minimum lot size, so those first three rows are all FAR 2 examples, so the 10-acre minimum lot size, normal. So if someone was to do an administrative subdivision, no lot can be less than 10 acres in size. Let's say, you know, the total parcel acreage, I'm giving you some examples of what some tracts of land could look like. So that first example, an 80-acre FAR 2 would allow eight conforming 10-acre parcels. Someone wants to elect to be in this process, they could get 12 separate parcels out of it. So it's a one and a half-density allowance to be in this open space subdivision. And then you can see, like, FAR 3, a 5-acre minimum, the last example on the bottom row, say you've got 30 acres of FAR 3 zoning, you normally could get six parcels out of that, one and a half times, you're now getting nine. So the math's fairly simple, I don't need to keep explaining math. So how this would work, the mechanics of this, is the first step would be for someone to come with a rezoning application. You guys have seen rezone applications before, and I think this is a really important first step, because this is a low-cost way for a developer to run this idea by you before they move forward into the cost of plating. Plating is really expensive, developers often don't want to put a lot of investment into something without knowing that they're going to get an approval. So the first step of the rezone is very conceptual. It's like identifying, look, there's these bluffs and these wetlands, all those things are going to be in the open space, and I'm going to make, you know, nine of these little lots here, and they're all going to be, you know, single-family residential uses. And then you guys review it, we do the public hearing, there's a big notice to everybody within a half a mile. We hear, hey, this is a great location for this type of housing, or, you know, hey, we don't want that. And we do a normal public hearing process for a rezone. After that rezone gets approved, you know, in this positive example, you know, we go over to the commissioners, commissioners have final approval, just the normal standard process we do for that. It then gets rezoned into this overlay district, so the underlying FAR 2 or FAR 3 zoning is still there, so those uses that were still allowable in FAR 2 and FAR 3 still, you know, we would look at that through that rezoning process. So like, if there's a use that was on that property that isn't really compatible with this rezone, that's where we can kind of identify those potential issues at that point in time. So it's just a more precise way to do this type of review. So I have some draft language in there that we can dig into for the discussion. That's just the draft purpose statement that I drafted for this. Again, within this overlay zone district, I'm proposing only five permitted uses, with a few ideas of conditional uses and a couple of prohibited uses, to be pretty specific about the ideas of what this area is for. And then I'm throwing out some dimensional standard requirements, so minimum lot area of a quarter acre, maximum lot area of two acres. The minimum lot area, to keep that small, would minimize the amount of, like, driveway length off of the road people have to build. They would allow people to cluster the houses next to each other, potentially to be on a shared septic, if that's more economical, depending on how things go. The maximum lot area, you know, somebody asked me, why do you have a maximum lot area for that? That, you know, maybe it's my wrong assumption, but I kind of feel like if you limit the lot size to be a maximum lot size, we're trying to, like, key in on affordable, so like, nobody gets more than a 2-acre lot, is that a way to, like, keep these a low-dollar lot? These are the things I'm not married to. I'm bouncing these ideas out there to see if these are tools that we could do to generate some development. And then lot size setbacks, kind of standard. And eligibility, so this is where we want to say, like, where could this really be? The eligibility to be in this overlay district, half a mile of state, Highway 61, county or township road, the property or the development's fully within non-shoreland area, and within the North Shore Management Zone, only on the west side of Highway 61, not the lakeside. And within the north shore management zone, only on the west side of highway 61, not the lakeside. And then maybe an exemption for the shoreline areas to be in the open space area. And then only within the far two or far three zone districts. And then after, like I said, after that overlay district got rezoned, then it would be the preliminary plat step and the final plat step. And some of the changes I have in here are outside of just this main priority. There's things that our office looked at our current preliminary and final plating processes and they said, what can we reorganize to make this easier for developers? So if you think about our recent temperance trails project that we reviewed, the developer wasn't quite detailed earlier on in the stage for things that the ordinance wants to see. And they kept saying, well, I'm not really sure what that's going to look like yet. So we're proposing some more flexibility, maybe to just say, all the septic stuff, we want to see that before the final plat is approved. It's a little bit of a risk, but that's kind of the way we're operating already. Like for temperance trails, we never saw a full septic design and we just kept punting. And we kept saying, well, we want to see that before we issue the preliminary plat or the final plat. And so it just puts a lot of responsibility on the developer to have their ducks in a row and know that what they're putting on paper can actually come at the end of the day. Otherwise, final plat's not going to get approved. And let's see, septic design, HOA agreement. So again, that's something that, you know, you guys got an HOA draft agreement for temperance trails, but it was kind of a useless document frankly. And so why are we asking developers to put that together at the preliminary plat stage when they don't even know what it's going to look like yet? So I'm saying, let's just wait till the final plat. So that's some of the other little ordinance changes in here as well. And then just an electronic submittals thing. So just a reminder of zoning in Cook County. So pretty much as we look at those road corridors going inland, the yellow and the orange is the areas that are immediately off of a county township or a state road that I'm looking at for this overlay district idea. So that's, that's the nuts and bolts of me talking to you. And then, you know, I'm happy to hear any thoughts that you have.
I have a question about, on page six, number three at the very bottom, where it says duplexes and then it says each unit on a separate lot. What does that mean?
Yeah, I was playing around with the duplexes a lot. I want to allow them because that's a great way to own something and run something. But I'm trying to think through like the septic side of things and keep this straightforward. And I haven't quite, so like, yeah, how do we figure out the density of duplexes? So the idea, like on, on some developments, you would have each part of the duplex on a separate PID. And you have two separate taxpayers. So someone could own both of those parcels and own the full duplex, but they would still be on two separate parcel IDs.
But you could also have two separate people owning duplexes?
Yeah, like I own one side of the wall and you own the other side of the wall. So yeah, just like trying to make our stru- uh, structure setbacks make sense for things when there is no setback.
If I'm understanding it right, this would be eligible if it's within those distances of the road? And it would only change on the parcel that it's requested and it would be, so the neighbor's parcel's still just a far two parcel, for example?
Yes, yep. And that's why I like the overlay district idea. Rather than saying, let's just rezon, let's change all the far three zoning. Instead of five acre, everybody can have two and a half acres now. Like that's a really blanket broad change without really thinking about the potential impacts. Rezoning of these overlay district locations, be very precise and look at the surrounding area and really make sure it fits for, for that spot.
I have all kinds of thoughts on this. I've worked, I've worked on some of these developments in the past, mostly through the environmental review. But the important part is the design process for the property, for the developer to come in, say where are the wetlands, where are the woodlands, where's bluffs? Get all that laid out first and then say, number one, do I have enough land in order to get my density differential credit? And then lay out with, with respect to those natural resources and protect them. And I know, I was talking to someone about this the other day, he said like, wow, .25, that's a small lot. But when you think about the big open space area that surrounds you, that lot feels much bigger because you have access to it and it changes the, kind of the character and the way the neighborhood feels. So I, I really think this is a good idea. It gives developers that incentive, you know, to get that extra .5 in your, in your units can really make your, your math work better.
Courtney, do you have?
That was the only question I had.
I guess, before we, what is, what is the goal for us tonight to do with it? Just introducing it to us or are we?
Yeah.
What do you want us to do with it tonight?
I want your feedback. I want to know like, hey, let's think through these examples or, you know, I don't like this idea. Or, you know, I'm, I was asked to present this also to the commissioners at the COW meeting next week. So I'll run this by the commissioners as well to get their preliminary feedback. But I, I want this to work. So, you know, if, if tonight seems like you guys are supportive of this, we could move forward to a public hearing at the May meeting. And, you know, pending the COW meeting as well. But I'd really like some, some homework to make this better. Been a lot of talking to myself and a few people that have been helped this so far. But you know what, you know, maybe Charlie as a developer, like you, you understand the economies of scale to some degree. Like, do you think this pushes the envelope enough to make this something that people are going to be willing to do? You know, I'm trying to lay all the cards on the table to see what does it take to build some, build some things from a zoning perspective in some spots? So yeah, just your feedback.
Yeah, I was able to look at this ahead of time and give some feedback to Niva. But in general, I think that, you know, cluster development is really key and on point when we think about the county and what we like about the county or what I think a lot of people like about the county. You know, to, yeah, you look at those two maps of the conventional subdivision and a cluster. And I think even, thinking of my own property, which is a 40 and five of it is cleared, you know, like that is in itself kind of a cluster development. And the fact that you can keep more wilderness undisturbed, I think is what we're going for. And I'm really supportive of that. And I think it's, it's bounded to the right zones as well in far two and far three. So I'm really supportive of it and think a lot of the nuances of it have been thought through. That's my initial impression.
It's going to take some digestion time. I have, I, I've got questions and I'd have to really think long and hard about with the sharing of septic systems, wells, et cetera. I like this idea. We do need better, better options for developers in this, in this county. And I think this might be one of the ways to do it, but I think we're going to have a lot of hammer, hammering to do to figure out exactly how this will work with all of the infrastructure.
Yeah, and it wouldn't require a shared septic. So that maybe that's something I should have made more clear too, is just laying out the option. And I was checking in with Mitch Eversen, our environmental health specialist, whether or not he thought there was a substantial savings economy-wise of making a shared septic system. And he didn't really think that that was a, a hard and fast rule all the time. So it's going to depend on site topography and, and all those things. So it's definitely flexible. It doesn't require everybody be on the same system, it just provides that option.
Maybe a follow-on to John's comment, but then, so if we have individual septics, this allows septic to be built on the common open space. So if everybody had an individual, they could, they could have it on the out plot.
Yep.
Behind their, behind their house or whatever.
Yes.
So it wouldn't necessarily have to be a community septic to be.
Yeah.
Put on that open space.
Yeah, if you do the math, like I'm saying, 50% minimum open space, but two acre maximum lot size, like your open space is going to be more than 50% for five and 10 acre minimum areas. Mostly, I haven't played out every example, but, so that's part of why I felt comfortable kind of throwing a bone, because usually the septic's not allowed in the open space and that causes some heartache. So let's just let the mountains be in the open space and call it a day.
And, and like Paul, you, you had sent me a copy quite a while ago. And I remember doing the math, the 30% impervious cover also has a factor on the smaller lots of keeping the house size smaller. Because what just, you put in a driveway, you put a garage, and then you put in a house and some sidewalks, you bump up against that 30% max pretty fast. I think it was a 2,200 square foot house. I, I don't have that old sheet with me, because I went through the math, how big a house could you actually build? So it, it does create that affordable housing size, not some, you know, mansion, small mansion type property. So. I had another question and now I forgot it, so.
So the 30% lot impervious coverage that would apply to each individual lot size, whether it's .25 or two acres?
Yeah.
That's how I remembered, thank you. And we had, we talked about, um, the kind of the idea of carriage house or garages with an apartment above them. This kind of allows this, if I understand it, right?
I feel like I've gone back and forth on the guest quarter, like five different times in this proposal idea.
And I, I think.
I don't know what's actually in this version anymore.
Because I actually think about it more as a, as a rental.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know, that, because I built my garage that way. I chose not to, to build it out, but I could actually have a rental apartment above my garage. So whether that's an option under this to happen or not.
Yeah.
It would allow for a long-term rental, just not vacation rental.
Yeah, right, right, exactly.
What I have in the current version, it's coming back to me now, is the guest cabin is a conditional use.
Okay.
And a part of that thinking was that if people were on a shared septic, we would want to be evaluating whether or not that septic capacity was there and it would have an impact on that other, you know, other users. You know, these are the things that like, I'm not married to it. This is just like my logic, trying to create a streamlined thing. So I also would love to have like, yeah, that second apartment to rent out long-term would be a good thing. So maybe we could think more on whether or not that should just be a permitted use and we just figure it out as we go. I don't know.
I, I think the septic in the open space is maybe something that would be only if it's shared septic. Just my first thought on it is that if each lot built their, built their drain field in that open space, you're burning up a lot of that open space, which on these already smaller lots in far, far two and three, we're losing the buffer for the, for the neighborhood too. So I think as a developer, this really seems like a great concept to work with. And I, you know, personally have been doing the math on a few different plans and I just keep struggling to make the math work. And, and this additional allowance is the kind of thing that might, might really tip the balance and make things work, so.
Yeah, so cluster systems maybe in the open space, keep the individual ones within the lot.
Within the lot, that was, that's my initial thinking on that. It just, it feels like it'd start to burn up the buffer for, for the neighborhood and might, might make this problematic. But if we keep that buffer area for the neighborhood, I think this really works. Go ahead, Dan.
Mr. Chair, one of the things I'd like to just comment on is having served on the HRA for over three years, that this really addresses all of the issues that we have struggled with in our conversations, dealing with the very limited private land that we have, that we need workforce housing, so you have to look at affordability. You have to look at smaller homes, you have to look at shared septic as being part of that solution. And this is an opportunity for us to really incentivize developers, which has been problematic for us. It also addresses the concerns that we have about vacation rentals. They're not allowed in this overlay district. And so I would just say, on a personal level, I really support this because it aligns very well with everything we've talked about for the last three years.
Thank you. Just a side question, and I don't know if there's restrictions on this or not, but shared wells, is there any? I mean.
We don't regulate wells, so it would be Department of Health.
And one other, yeah, I mean, back to the guest cabin idea. I guess I'm, I can see the merit of keeping it a CP, just to have some oversight on it. But I'm really supportive of it, I think, from an affordability standpoint. That that, you know, that could be the difference between whether you can afford to pay the mortgage on the house or not, to have that rental. And to that point, I, I don't have a strong opinion yet, maybe need to think about it more. But there might be some room to allow vacation rental in conjunction with a primary residence on the site. You know, and I know that's a strategy that like a lot of municipalities take with Airbnb to, you know, cut down the speculation of Airbnb. That, yeah, sure, you can have an apartment that you rent out above the garage as long as you live there. You know, you can't just buy up the lot to turn it for an Airbnb. But that's another strategy to make it affordable to live there, as if, you know, you, you want to engage in that and have that as a side hustle basically? And you rent out a little apartment in short term? I'm not necessarily opposed to that at the start, I think there's things to think about, about that. You know, and the biggest one being that you're in close quarters neighborhood. So that's changing the lived experience of that neighborhood a little bit, so.
I had similar thoughts about that, Paul. Part of my thinking on it was that if you want to have that kind of side income, then make that unit a long-term rental. Because how many people do we know are looking for someplace just to rent? And if we want to be kind of purist a little bit, I hear grumbles from people sometimes of like, there's nowhere that you can just know there's not going to be a vacation rental next to you in Cook County. And so this would give that neighborhood of like, there is no short-term rental here. And like, that, that was where I was landing on with that. It's like, if you want that, that side income to try to pay your own mortgage, get a long-term renter in your thing. And, you know, that comes with its own things, but we don't regulate that. There's no, there's no license or permit for that at all. So that's another, another option for that.
Yeah, I definitely concur. And then to play devil's advocate, I mean, just to give people the choice of what they want to engage in, to make that income. But like I said, I think what's, what tips it is that, well, your neighbor's not signing up for necessarily which option they'd like. You know, and this, this is an opportunity for us to put our thumb on that scale a little bit and say, these neighborhoods are for full-time residential, you know.
I think some places where they're doing this, they're called accessory, accessory dwellings. You know, which maybe, maybe is a terminology to consider. So it conveys that directly to the developers. We're not talking about, you know, creating mini Caribou Highlands or something, but we're talking about another place for somebody to live, whether it's your mother-in-law or a long-term rental.
It appears to be a great concept to continue exploring some of these details. For the sake of tonight, I'd like to get to our, people who are sitting in the audience and.
Right. Before we leave the subject, because the next step would be for me to publish this in the newspaper and put it out there for people to start calling my phone. You know, what, what of these different things that we talked about, just as a conclusion, you know, what would you like to see different before we put it out for public hearing? To actually throw it out to the community for their feedback? You know, we talked about the cluster, septic's being in the open space, dimensional requirements, these different use discussions that we had. Do you feel ready for that? Do you want another work session to think through this some more? I don't want to, this has just been sitting in my brains. There's no giant rush, I just know that once the summer comes, everybody's really busy. And I knew if I didn't move forward on this now, I never was going to, so.
I think it would be a great idea to get other people's opinion as well. So I would totally support you. If you're ready to see the filter for all that and take on all those phone calls. Because I think something does need to be done, so.
One of my thoughts, just as a detail was, and I don't, can't predict all the ramifications, but potentially within a quarter mile of the road system versus a half mile, might be something we want to look at. But I think it sounds like. I don't think anybody sounds way, way far off here on, we got a few details to, to explore, so.
Okay. Well, if you have substantial changes in mind or any changes, let me know within like the next week before I put it in the paper. Otherwise I'll be on the May agenda for a public hearing and I'll wait till I get some commissioner feedback also. So, all right. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, Niva.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
We've got a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Plan Chris Coast, kick me out of here.
Have a good night.
We'll go ahead and, uh, Hannah, do you need a moment or are you just still?